Okay, we call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Town of Lee, Right to Know Law Meeting Checklist is Chairman of the Select Board due to the COVID-19 Coronavirus Crisis. In accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this Board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location. Observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting which is authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, this is to confirm that we are: A) Providing access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing the Zoom platform for the electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone: 1-646-558-8656 and entering meeting ID 872-43400223. Password 534667 while entering the same information through zoom.us. B) Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zine and instructions provided on the Town of Lee's website at leenewhampshire.org. C) Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-659-5414. D) Adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled to another time. Please note that all votes that are taken during the meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting which is required under the Right to Know Law. Kerry Brown, are you here?
Yes, I'm here, I'm alone.
All right. Scott Bugby, are you here?
I'm here and there's nobody in the room with me.
John Lacorice, I'm here and nobody's in the room with me. First order of business, Joe Bassett, General Manager, Lee USA Speedway, Schedule Change Request. Joe, I know you're there, you got the floor.
Thank you very much. We, as everybody knows, we lost about four, maybe five races so far this year and we've lost two of our Rusty Wallace experiences and one of our test and tunes. We have an opportunity to have a decent show on September 11th, which we also would like to have it so with everything going on in the world today, to honor the first responders, where it falls on September 11th. If this is approved, we'll be letting them in for free, we'd like to have fireworks. And with it being a big show, that we'd just like an extra hour to have a little bit more practice because of the size of the show that we're trying to put on. So that's pretty much a nutshell of what we're looking for compared to, you know, what we've lost over this past few months over the pandemic. So I guess I would ask you if you had any questions for us and take it from there.
Questions from the Board first.
No.
No.
Okay, I'll settle with that. Chief Drunkspel, any issues?
You're muted, Tom.
Sorry, no issues at all.
Chief Emmett?
No issues.
Anybody else have comment?
The only comment I'd like to make is September 11th is also my birthday, thank you, Joe.
We'll make sure they have a birthday cake for you.
After the vote, could I ask Joe a question though, John?
I knew it.
He knew that was coming, but after the vote, okay. Therefore, I move to grant the Lee USA Speedway permission to modify the previously approved 2020 schedule as follows. One, to hold a race at 7:00 PM on Friday, September 11th with the practice starting at 3:00 PM until 6:00 PM and fireworks following the race at 9:45 PM. Two, to allow for the rain date on Saturday, September 12th with the practice starting at noon and the race starting between 3:00 to 3:00, they're starting at 3:00 PM?
It'd be between 3:00 and 3:30.
3:00 and 3:30, okay. The Select Board reserves the right to revoke the approval if complaints are received regarding the changed schedule. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion on the motion on the floor?
No.
Hearing, Tom? Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
What's the question? I didn't hear it.
I just read it to you, the whole motion.
Oh, the whole motion, yes.
Okay. Mr. Lacorice, yes, motion carries, congratulations, Joe. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Bugby, you have the floor.
Joe, could you just, and I know many people know this, but some people don't, and I just want to, you know, not necessarily on the record, but so people have that awareness. People in the Town of Lee can get into your races for free, they have to sign up. Could you go through that process for us, Joe?
Well, normally with Town Hall open, you would go to the Town Hall, fill out a form and get it stamped, and then it would be sent to us. What we're doing this year is if you have a piece of mail, bill, whatever, just to show you're a resident, we're letting the residents in. We've been trying to work with any of the townspeople who'd like to come to the races.
Okay, all right. I just had somebody come up to me and said that they really liked to attend your races, and I made them mention that they should be able to get in for free, and they said, "No, we had to pay." And I said, "Well..."
No, no.
"...that." So they didn't know it, I guess.
Go to Window 1 and see Sarah with a bill, you know, something with your address on it, and we'll gladly let them in.
Okay, next.
It's something we've always done and we'll continue to do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Julie, could we put that change up on the website?
Which change? Oh, the racing schedule?
Yeah, we added the extra date there.
Yeah, we don't typically put things regarding the schedule on the website. We have not historically.
And the reason why not?
Well, I think in the past, and this is distant past because it's before I got here, I think maybe we used to do that or used to put it in the Lee eCrier, and some people got upset that it was the town advertising the racetrack.
I remember, okay, that scratch that, I remember that discussion. Okay, please Chief. Tom, you have the floor.
Thank you. So we have, the Police Department has become incredibly busy, especially this year. Over the weekend, we broke over 150 arrests already for the year, and that's even with the COVID shutdown. Can't quite put our finger on it, why it is, but it is. And for the past few years, Lieutenant Liberty has been doing our prosecution, and we're at a point now where it's taking him off the road for most of his work week, and we just don't have enough people to dedicate somebody for that. We need everybody on the street. So I put some feelers out and I got contacted by a couple of attorneys who are doing prosecuting. And Steve, who's the one I'm recommending, he came in with a bid about half as much as the next nearest person, and the reason for that is he's retired, he's not looking to make a living at it, he just wants to stay active. And for that reason, he's able to come in at just about half, a little more than half of what the next nearest attorney was at. Looking at my budget, you know, we're saving on overtime from Lieutenant Liberty because there are, you know, there'll be an administrative license suspension hearing from a DWI that might be 9:00 in the morning, and the lieutenant right now doesn't start shift till 4:00. He comes in at 9:00, handles it, or he's handling things from home. He won't have to do that anymore, the attorney will come in and take care of it, or a lot of stuff is being done by video, he'll do it from his office. So I can easily afford this out of my overtime budget right now because obviously it wasn't budgeted for it, but unfortunately, it's become necessary.
Is this something you would expect to continue in the future, next year?
Yeah, if we continue on this course, absolutely. I'm gonna have to build it into my budget.
Questions from the Board?
I have a question for the Chief.
Please.
Mr. Carroll's, is he local, I assume?
From Manchester.
Okay. So is there any cost into, I noticed in terms of your description, in terms of his hourly rate, what if he has to travel? Is there cost for travel, or how is that?
No, this is, this is all inclusive. This includes him coming to the Police Department three days a week to work on prosecution.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
So Chief, let me ask you a question. In the future, what would you see? Would you see this position becoming a permanent position within the Police Department? And what, it's gonna be $20,000 a year or whatever? Or is this something that you think is gonna go away?
No, this will not go away. I don't see us, I don't see things slowing down to that point, but I don't see it getting to the point of $20,000 a year. We used to have an attorney do our prosecution when I first took over, and I think at that time, we were paying around $7,000, but we weren't that busy.
Well, let me just point out to you, this is $8,192 for the remainder of the year, right?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay, so it's about a $16,000 to $17,000 annual, annual cost, if we went...
He'll be doing about 75% of the year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he'll start probably, if this is approved, he will actually come in for several weeks for free to shadow the lieutenant, to pick up on our process, and then start sometime in September.
Okay.
So we only really lost July and August.
But to Mr. Brown's point, the annualized cost for this particular service is around $11,520, right? 960 a month?
Okay. Town Administrator, any questions?
No.
Anybody else have questions for the Chief on this issue? Hearing then, I move to allow the Police Chief to hire an outside prosecutor as recommended.
Okay.
Further discussion on the motion?
No.
Oh, Mr. Brown?
Yes, open word.
Okay, Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Mr. Lacorice, yes, motion carries. Tom, you still have the floor.
Thank you. The next item is our Equitable Sharing Agreement and Certification. Basically, the monies that we've forfeiture, drug forfeiture seizures, every year it has to be, we have to account for the monies. So it's just, it's our annual certification. Joanne tells us how much money is there, and we sign off and send it to them.
Questions from the Board?
So for people just listening, the beginning balance was $56.99 and the ending balance is $57.71, so $57.71, so it's not large amounts of cash.
Right. We have seized over, almost $8,000 in cash over the past month and a half from drug arrests, so we'll be seeing some more go into that.
Well, how much of that goes into this fund and how much goes to the federal government?
I think it's, I think we split it 50/50. If another town was involved in assistance, then it would get divided up more.
Okay, thank you, Sarah.
Therefore, I have moved to, you know, I guess we're trying to approve the, well, the certification process, I guess, at this time.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
Wow, you're an easy bunch today, at least so far. Mr. Bugby, vote.
I'm in favor, yes.
Mr. Brown, vote.
Yes, in favor.
Yeah, Mr. Lacorice, in favor. You've got it, we consider it.
Thank you.
Anything else, Chief?
That's it, thank you very much.
Next item, Selectman Bugby has some comments on the Oyster River School District Finance Committee meeting.
I attended the meeting on, what was it, July 29th with Dean, Dean Robine. It was a good meeting. Madbury was there, and there was representatives from the Town of Durham, and also School District Administration and a couple of members of the school board. So it was a good meeting. I reported in terms of how much taxes we had brought in for the first, first bill that went out. The other two towns seem to have similar experiences. I think everybody had more than what they had last year, which is kind of interesting. But it was a consensus that we're waiting for the second bill. It's Superintendent Morse's opinion in that the second bill is gonna be problematic, so we all kind of, kind of agreed to that. We agreed to keep continuing meeting and see how those things play out for each of the towns. The other thing we talked about is the school district has some capital projects coming up, and they're trying to maneuver those so that they're, I don't want to say more cost effective because they should be doing that already, but, so they don't impact us as much as possible. They did get the cheaper rate in terms of the bond that was sold, so that was good news, so that saved us some money. The other thing we talked about is doing, looking into, see if we can do some cooperative buying for things that we all buy together. So everybody seemed to be interested in that, saving some money. It was a good meeting, everybody had their, their two cents about everything. We did also talk about kids going back to school, and we all know what they decided this last Wednesday, so that's something they're gonna keep their eye on. They do have significant expenses for COVID-related stuff, so that's something that we're gonna have to, you know, watch in terms of expenses wise. So it was a good meeting. Let the Board know when we meet again, so if there's anything that they'd like us to bring up, but it was a good, it was a good discussion.
I have a couple of things. One, and maybe Town Administrator can help me with this, is there money in the CARES Act for the school system?
I believe so, they did get some, but not very much. I want to say like $24,000, not very much. Their costs so far are up in the couple of hundred thousand dollar range at the moment, I believe. So until the federal government starts allocating money to the municipalities, I don't think that's gonna change, but maybe she has more information.
Yeah, no, so far as I know, they've certainly only gotten, I don't even think it's 50,000, it's definitely less than $50,000.
And the second question, I did see something that floated through the email system, or maybe it reported to me, Scott, associated with they, they do have a retirement program going on? Do you have any idea of the number of teachers?
Yeah, they, they talked about that a little bit, they hadn't got any definite numbers. I don't think the, the window that the students, the teachers had has closed yet, but they, I seem to remember like 17, I said, so far I signed up, but they're, they're looking to retire those people out and hire people, you know, with less years of experience, so in a sense, they're paying them less. So they're trying that, they've done, I don't know, he mentioned in terms of when the last time they did it, it was a little while ago, so, but yeah, as far as I know, they haven't closed yet in terms of retiring, yes, there will be X number in savings going for that, so.
Yeah, 'cause I remember that his presentation with respect to the bond becoming over, when, is it the second year or third year kicks in, there's one bond that's taken out, and part of the retirement, well, retiring senior faculty members will provide some more resources, so it won't be so hard on the tax rate, I guess.
That's what they're trying to do with the, the whole capital improvements project, trying to, trying to lessen that hump on that particular second year, so, and they're also hoping, they're not sure in terms of when the second bond, if it's gonna be in January next year or July, but they're hoping the rate stays lower so we can achieve those particular savings for the interest, so. It was a good meeting.
Good, I'm glad. Any questions for Selectman Bugby from anybody else?
I just, I have a comment, only that I heard there are some, let's say, some items in there that they've got that are catching the attention of the public, such as they have car charging stations, they've got four of them for $125,000, et cetera, et cetera, so I assume there's a lot of detail that needs to be looked at in these, in these cost estimates.
Right. We didn't talk anything about the middle school project other than the bond issue.
Okay.
So we didn't go into what was included, what isn't included. They did have a groundbreaking ceremony, I was unable to attend, but...
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Just want to change the order a little bit on the, the agenda. I wonder if the Fire Chief is here, and tell us about, did they hire somebody and who the person was for this position?
We have, so we interviewed, I think about eight or nine people. We probably had 12 candidates apply for the position. Out of that, I did five as a Chief's interview. Who we hired was Liam Cushing. He lives in Bedford, New Hampshire right now. He was a part, per diem firefighter for the Town of Ashland, and he's also coming from New Boston, where he was a qualified firefighter there. He's been a firefighter for five years, has his fire too, he's working on his AMT. He took the practical test and passed that, he's just waiting to take the written. He has a CDL license, so he comes with almost all the certifications that we're really looking for. He's a great individual. When I met with him, surprisingly, he was one of the only ones that was actually smiling and in a great mood when we were doing the Chiefs interviews. I know it's nerve-wracking for some, but he's got a great personality. He started what we call a staff week last week, so he came in for four days, worked with a bunch of different people to get to know everybody, started to know the town, going through the equipment, and today was his first day on shift. We're gonna place him with Lieutenant Eaton on the same shift schedule, so that we can get him trained up. I didn't want to have him jump ship, jump shifts and have to train with other people. We just wanted one solid transition for that, and he's already going right through his probationary manual and knocking things off. They're working on the drive time right now, everybody has to drive all the apparatus a certain number of hours to get checked off, and like I said, he's gone through all of our equipment, and he's already getting into the daily routines of everything that we do, and he's gonna be a great candidate.
Wonderful.
That's very good news, I really appreciate all the effort you've put in and finally come to a good purpose. Any questions for the Fire Chief at this time?
No.
Okay, thank you very much, Scott, we appreciate it. Julie Glover?
So I know Linda was having some technical difficulties, I don't know if she's been able to jump on the call on the meeting yet. This is the latest information that she sent to me relative to the tax revenue collections. We're still doing quite well in comparison to last year, so that's still looking positive.
Good.
The next item for discussion, you had asked the Recreation Commission to meet, which they did last week, to talk about the MOU, so Larry Kidberg is in the meeting, so he might want to speak to that.
Larry, you there?
I am here.
You got the floor.
Thank you. We were asked to take a look at the MOU. There are two organizations looking to take over management of the fields. Just to go back a little bit, there's really only, when we looked at this, there's really only one field in question that's created an issue. We have two competing organizations, two 501(c), three organizations from the community competing for time on the fields. Now, the only field that really is in question is the multipurpose field at Little River Park. The field at Mast Way is used by ORYA, not Maximum Velocity. The Stevens Field is used by Maximum Velocity, not ORYA. And Little River Park, it appears that the baseball diamond is used by ORYA. So that just leaves the multipurpose field, which is used for soccer and lacrosse practice. So with that in, in mind, there really is only one field in question with regard to looking at the MOUs because of the competition between the two organizations trying to get enough time. Every year, we seem to deal with this issue of Maximum Velocity not getting time, and the other thing that has been, has been problematic is the maintenance of the fields by ORYA with regard to the MOU. So looking at this, we kind of came up with a, hopefully a reasonable solution, and that is that no, there is no one controlling organization. It would be split between Maximum Velocity and ORYA 15 days a month. Each one would get 15 days to schedule their field usage. Obviously, there would be days that wouldn't be used by either organization, they could work out what days they wanted to fill in, need be. The other, the other thing has to do with the maintenance, and we felt that the maintenance of the fields ought to come under the town control completely. In other words, Steve does a great job maintaining the fields and supervising that, we should take over that complete issue, so that there's no question with regard to the maintenance. But in so doing, we looked at the numbers that ORYA provided in what they had, what they pay for maintenance, which is primarily fertilization, some detaching, and some other minor, minor things that come up, and it comes out to a little over $5,000 a year. What we're recommending is, is that all organizations that use the town fields pay the same amount for the usage of the fields, which is our published rate, keeping the current rates in place. That way, everybody's on, so to speak, a level playing field with regard to the cost involved, with regard to not having to worry about maintenance, and that money that comes into the town, right now, it's basically Maximum Velocity that's paying for the use of the fields, and currently, that money goes into the Rec Commission's revolving fund. We felt that that money ought to go into a fund to maintain the fields rather than our revolving fund. So that's kind of where we came up with, with regard to the recommendation, that, call it an MOU or whatever you want to, but there just wouldn't be one organization that has been controlling all the scheduling. The two organizations would have to work that out themselves.
Thank you for your comment and advice, appreciate it. Questions from the Boards? Anything out there?
Yeah, I'm out here, I think it's, you know, I think it's worth a try. We've been, we've been fighting this, we've been fighting this for a long time, we need to come up with something that's not as, if you would, mentally intensive, trying to get this done every year, so I, I think it's worth a try, it's got some new things in it. I know that there's questions about whether the two entities could sit down and come up with an agreement on days and so on. Well, I would hope they could, this is all in, really, this is in their best interest to do it that way. I don't, I don't think we should put too many town resources into scheduling, into scheduling their teams, and I, I think it's worth a, I think it's worth a chance.
I don't know, I'm not so enthusiastic at this point to make these modifications and changes this late in the season, maybe this is something that'd be looked at at some other time, but this is pushing it real late in the season to make these modifications and changes. So I'm kind of not enthusiastic about doing the sharing experience. I've gotten, I want to say at least seven or eight emails from parents supporting Oyster River Youth Association. I have nothing supporting Maximum Velocity at this time. And many of the emails and letters are very strong. Nothing against Maximum Velocity, but they're very comfortable with Oyster River Youth Association. So not to prolong this thing, I think I want to put it on the floor to move to, grant the MOU to Oyster River Youth Association, to see if this thing moves at all. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's open discussion on the floor at this time, any other questions, or anybody want to pose a comment?
I'm just trying to digest everything that Larry said, so, there was a lot there. The first thing that, that I want to say is, I kind of like the Oyster River Youth because they allow all the kids to play, not just the kids that are very talented, and we provide those for fields for everybody, not just the outstanding athletes or the very talented athletes, so that's one of the things that's kind of sticking with me. The other thing to address what Mr. Brown said and also what you said, Mr. Lacorice, I, I don't want to keep coming back and doing this every single year. I would like to make an agreement that is kind of, I don't want to say necessarily evergreen, but it goes year after year. but it goes year after year. If either of the parties want to change something, then we have to get back together. Maybe the term goes for like five years and then we have to redo it or relook at or restart it again. Um, I don't want to have to go in, um, discuss this every single year. Um, so those are my two thoughts at the moment.
Thank you very.
Say something?
Who's this?
Matt. This is Joff with Maximum Velocity.
Yes, you can say something. You have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we don't turn any kids away from Durham Lee or Madbury. We never have. We don't discriminate. So I want that to, I want that to be clear that we don't discriminate. We've never turned anybody away. So, um, I, I want, want all the members to know that. We've never turned anybody away.
That's, that's not what we've been hearing in terms of the people that are contacting us. There's one lady that sticks in my mind that, um, the kids that were playing with her daughter and, uh, all of them got picked, well, majority of them got picked for your, your group, but she didn't get picked.
She never, she never showed up or, or contacted us.
Okay. Well, I'm just going, well, well, people tell me. I'm not there and I'm using it.
Correct. But I'm, I'm, I'm letting you know, as, as a president, a resident in Lee since 1996, that nobody has been pushed aside or said that they're not there. That person had never sent an email and never showed up. Ever. So, I mean, to discriminate against something like that, uh, absolutely, we did not do that. Um, we're, we're inclusive. Basketball, field hockey, soccer. We're good stewards of the property. And, um, you know, I've been in the entertainment business for 22 years and I've done some of the biggest events throughout the country. And, you know, I don't talk about those things because I don't like to do that in our town, but those things are assets that, that can be used as my knowledge and strength and the things that I've given back to the town over the time. Was also on the rec commission for eight years and helped develop and build Little River Park. I know that inside and out, left and right. So we don't, we don't discriminate. And as for having people send emails, I don't want people to bombard all you guys. So, um, it's fair. We're a nonprofit based in Lee. Go ahead. Um.
We get it bombarded all the time, Jeff. So bombard us.
Yeah, that's part of our job function. We get bombarded. Thank you, Joff, for your comments at this time.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, it's, the motion is moved, has been seconded. Uh, Mr. Lacorice is a yes. Mr. Bugby?
And I clarify something, John. What do you, what do you, I know what you proposed, but what's the term? What do you, can you redo that again or let me know?
I didn't put it, I assume the MOU is going to be for a one-year contract.
All right. Cause that, that's, should be specific in terms of what we're suggesting. So.
You want a date certain?
Yeah, if we can, if we can lay down, because we, this is something we have to put in place. So we need to know what the term is.
Julie?
Can I just make a comment about the term?
Yes.
Right.
Timing. At least time it so that it, you know, like maybe do it for January, February, March. In other words, before they start spring sports. Or it could even be December, although December is a crazy busy month. Um, as is January and February with budgeting. So that's another reason why March seemed to work. Got us through all of the budgeting process. And then it would give time for whomever has the MOU to think about scheduling spring sports.
So let's target the date in March.
So let's do it between today and March 31st, 2021.
I agree to that as the mover of the motion. Do you have a vote, Mr. Bugby?
Uh, with that small change, I am yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
And motion carries. Thank you very much on this item. Economist ready, still have the floor.
Thank you. Um, just a verbal update on where we stand with the lease of the Daley building. Um, our attorney returned from vacation last week. She and I had a lengthy conversation about the 17-page lease agreement from Mr. Daley's attorney. Um, she made some changes to it. And I sent it off to Primex because there's a lot of new language in there relative to insurance and indemnification. So I'm just waiting for Primex's comments back and then I will send both their comments and our attorney's comments to Mr. Daley. I assume he'll share that with his attorney. Um, we also engaged the Stratford Regional Planning Commission, um, to do the turn lane analysis that DOT is looking for. Um, and Mr. Daley agreed to pay for that. So I believe that their field work is finished and that we are just waiting for their report.
So can I assume that you still feel very positive about that this thing will come to a conclusion?
I, I do, I wouldn't put the very, but I still feel positive about it. Um, and I think as we talked last time, maybe now we're looking at an October 1 move-in date.
Questions for the economist trader on this subject?
No, I have another question afterwards, though.
Uh, I, I have a question.
Please.
Uh, Julie, if I remember right, the new lease is 17 pages?
Correct.
Okay. At a point in time, that's right. Could I get a copy of that, please?
Absolutely.
Okay. All the select persons should get copies.
Yep.
Have full discussion. Please continue. Anything else?
No, that's all I have, unless Karen wants to chime in.
Karen?
I think you've covered everything.
Thank you. Mr. Bugby, you have something else in this area?
Yeah. Julie, can you update us on the treehouse issue, please?
So I've spoken with our attorney. She has heard nothing from Mr. Hogan. So she has asked him in writing to please respond. He was going, the last time they spoke, um, he was going to propose some meeting dates and we have not heard anything from him yet.
I, I don't want this to drag on anymore. It's kind of been months since we even started this particular thing. So.
Right. The only other thing, and I don't know how the attorneys feel about this. The only other thing I thought of was to contact Mr. Stevens directly and see whether he's even spoken to Mr. Hogan recently.
I, I don't know what the other board members feel like, but I, I think this has dragged on long enough. Um, and I don't necessarily want to keep it going week after week after week. So I'm not sure what the other two board members feel, but I, I think we should kind of give some kind of closure to this in terms of this whole situation. I don't know what your thoughts are.
How many times have you met with him, Scott?
I met with him personally once.
Okay. And, and, and if I remember right, the board kind of had a, let's go over there and see if we can give them X amount of time to, uh, keep the treehouse intact and, you know, whether it was two months or six months, whatever. I forget what we said. Uh, but have we ever made that proposal to him?
Yeah, he has a, he has a letter. Go ahead, Julie.
Yeah, I was going to say, he received a letter when Mr. Bugby met with him, uh, and I think it was Deb, was it Deb Sugarman?
Yes.
And in that letter, it laid out that he had until November, December to remove the treehouse.
Okay. And my, my conversation with him, his response was he wanted to think about it. So at that point, he was going to get back with me within a week or two. He never did. And then we heard that his lawyer had contacted the town. So that's the process, but that was at least a month ago, at least. So it doesn't take that long, I wouldn't think. But I don't necessarily want this to go on and on and become September. Now it's October. We need to give some kind of closure in terms of, you know, we need to meet by this date or we're going to proceed.
Well, uh, this select person, John Lacorice agrees with, uh, Selectman Bugby at this time. I don't want us to drag either. So if there's anything we can have our loyal lawyer do to try to push it, I would appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay. Just explain to her how frustrated we are and is there some other way to move this along as quickly as possible? Anything else with town administrator?
Uh, no.
Okay. Uh, the consent agenda. Can you just speak to the highway block rent compared to what we got last year and what we got this year for the public?
Yeah. Uh, what we received last year was 114,051. So it's only off by less than $4,000.
So we did pretty good.
Yeah, it, it may be that the year 2022 is the one, or fiscal 2022 is the one we need to worry about.
Absolutely.
So is that number good for this whole year or are they inconsciously come back and say, oh no, we don't have enough money?
Well, you know, it's conquered, so you never know. But I mean, they're telling us that they're going to give us $110,000.
All right. Fair enough.
Does any select person want to remove anything from the consent agenda?
I don't know about 6A. I don't know. I don't know about that one. No, I have, I have no problems.
Mr. Brown, any problems?
Oh, none at all. It's fine.
Therefore, I move to accept the consent agenda as presented. Where are seconds?
Second.
Thank you very much. Discussion?
No.
No. Mr. Brown, you have a vote?
Yes.
Mr. Spugby?
Yes.
Mr. Lacorice, yes, motion carries. Any other miscellaneous unfinished business?
Uh, one thing, I sent an email to Julie and also to Steve. There's some problematic trees on Little River Park on one of the trails. So, uh, Steve responded and said he'd take a look at it. If he couldn't deal with it, he was going to get somebody in. I just want to know the, let the board know that that's a liability to the town. So just be aware of it. So we're dealing with it. I believe, I don't know if Steve wants to speak to it if what he found, but, um, just so you're aware of it.
Steve, you there?
Yeah, I went and looked at it. It's, uh, it's gonna, it's nerve wracking. It's not one that I enjoy cutting down, but I think I can get it down. I'm just going to have to cut down a live oak tree in order to get everything on the ground because the pictures that Scott had sent me only show part of the problem. There's another real big dead red pine tree that's leaning into it too. So there's actually, one tree's going to drop three trees. So it's going to be a mess.
But you did confirm it's on town property though, right?
That I did not.
Uh-oh. Okay.
It's underneath. It's even, I think it's on town property according to what me, Pete and Warren looked at when we were there. They both think it is.
Okay. All right. Well, just make sure.
If it's not on town property, I think it's on Cord Blumquist land. So if, I'll just go ask him anyway and see what he says.
Well, take that Karen Rossi person out with you because she knows where all those boundaries are.
Yes, she does.
I do know where those boundaries are. Sure, I'll go out with him.
All right. She also knows where all the dead bodies are out there too. So.
And I know where there's room for more.
Oh my goodness. All right. All right.
Uh, any other unfinished business?
No.
No.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Lacorice, yes, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. We appreciate it.